I need it. I'm having a technical difficulty on audio on the stream too, so give me a second to get that resolved before we start.
I need it.
Oh. Yeah, not working, okay.
So, we are going to be moving out of West Bath into Bath. And so, I knew that I wasn't gonna be here as a resident for the next full term of everything. And so, I didn't want to run knowing that then I would have to leave and they'd have to find somebody else to replace me, so.
Oh, that's too bad.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm all set.
Ah, that was a weird delay. Uh, we'll go ahead and uh, get started here. Uh, Bob certainly uh, hopefully will join us here before too long, so I'll go ahead and.
Going to disconnect Keith so that he can log back in. It's like those Geico commercials are coming to life.
It's gonna be one of those days. Alright, sorry about that. It's gonna be a computer glitch day. And already, um, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the October twenty fourth, twenty first meeting of the school board and ask everybody, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you, everybody, welcome. Couple of things, uh, in my comments from the chair section. Uh, obviously, there is a pending upcoming election. I'm sure all of you, uh, have received plenty of mail to remind you, uh, to get out and vote. Uh, certainly do encourage everyone to get out, cast a ballot. Uh, absentee ballots are available and certainly the option to vote in person, uh, is there as well. We do have two school board seats, uh, up for election this year. And, uh, we do have a board of selectmen seat as well. And of course, there's, uh, state and federal, uh, seats. Uh, so get out there, make sure your voice is heard, be part of the process. Uh, and with that, um, you know, this, uh, pending, anything that pops up in the next few weeks is likely to be the last meeting, uh, for both Bob and Mary. Uh, so we certainly want to, uh, acknowledge them, appreciate the years of service they've given to the board. Uh, their input has been invaluable. Um, their perspectives and their voices will be missed, uh, missed dearly moving forward. Uh, we certainly wish them, wish them well and encourage them to continue to remain, uh, active and involved with the school moving forward. Uh, and, and Mary certainly, it's been a pleasure to have you on the board. It's been helpful to have your perspective, uh, as a parent, uh, but also as a former, uh, school employee. Uh, so, so thank you very much, uh, for the time and, and don't be a stranger.
Thank you.
Brings us to item four, uh, approval of the minutes from the September sixteenth meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion by Ashley, second by Joanne, any discussion? I will go ahead and call the roll and I guess we'll also consider this me taking attendance because I forgot to do that early on. Uh, Mary?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Bob? Bob, Bob's, Bob's absent. Uh, I will go ahead and vote yes as well, that'll pass unanimously. Brings us to item five, adjustments to the agenda. I'm not aware of any adjustments, does any board member have anything? Alright, moving on to item six, public comment. Uh, I do not believe we received any email public comment prior to the meeting. Remind anybody who may be watching live stream this evening, you can email public comment, uh, publiccomment@westbathschool.org. Any comments received during the course of the meeting will be, uh, read and shared during the second portion of public comment later on in our agenda. Again, that's publiccomment@westbathschool.org. Brings us to item seven, seven point one, policy committee. We do not have an update this evening. Uh, seven point two, technology committee?
Uh, there are no updates.
Item seven point three, facilities committee?
There are no updates.
Uh, seven point four point one, uh, payroll warrants were reviewed and signed, uh, by me on, uh, September twenty eighth and again on October ninth. Item seven point four point two, AP warrants, both Ashley and I reviewed AP warrants and signed them on nine thirty and again on ten fourteen. Brings us to item eight, superintendent's report.
Uh, first for our financial report, I just wanna say with seventy percent of our year remaining, our budget document shows that we have eighty-two percent of our budget remaining. Uh, that being said, tuition bills have not, have just arrived and so we haven't paid any of our first two months tuition. That will help to make that adjustment closer to being more in line with seventy percent. But otherwise, all lines are tracking appropriately. Uh, we still have a few lines like in the, on the first page with instructional equipment that you can see needs to be adjusted and moved back to our COVID relief fund grant for reimbursement. Um, so a couple of those items that still need to be straightened out, but otherwise, all items in the financial report are as expected. In terms of our, sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, any board questions on the financial report? Carry on.
In terms of our financial audit, I wanted to give you an update that we have connected with our auditors to make a plan for our fall audit. And it has been delayed because like everything else, the pandemic got bitten away. Um, we had to have some conversations about how to move forward with the process while still maintaining distance and not sharing materials and all of those pieces. And they actually hadn't, um, begun any school audits and so we're, we're all sort of in queue. Uh, but she sent me a list of materials that we're gonna digitize and prepare for them. And so, we'll start with a digital process that way and then, uh, we'll be able to set up, um, space in the conference room for them to be able to access any further materials as follow up. But the process has begun, so I just wanted to, to let you know of that and give you that update. Uh, in terms of district updates. Um, most of our world is, is focused on coming to school and it, um, making sure that we're maintaining our procedures and protocols and safety and, um, teaching and learning and building relationships and tending to social emotional wellbeing. And there hasn't been a whole lot of, um, opportunity for a bunch of other things, although we have definitely settled into our year and, um, things are beginning to find that sort of sense of pattern, routine and normalcy that, um, it, it's, it's a relief. It's a relief to be here, it's wonderful to be able to see each other and to see students and again, I'm going to settle into some, um, regular routines. In terms of updates, I wanna let you know that, uh, yesterday I received, um, a letter which you have in your packet, um, saying that West Bath School has been, uh, awarded the Spirit of America Award for Saginaw County this year. And, um, that is from our Better World Day project. So their, their statement says that West Bath School Better World Day, um, as their project, students made posters thanking essential workers and first responders for all they were doing for the community during the pandemic. Uh, parents took pictures of their children displaying the posters and sent the photos to school and they were compiled into a lovely video and sent to essential workers and first responders in appreciation of their efforts. And then feedback from recipients was shared with students during their crew meetings so pupils could understand the impact of their kindness, um, what the kindness was having on others. So they, um, we've been recognized for Saginaw County for a community service. We're joined by the Auburn School Department Nutrition Program, the Augusta School Nutrition Program, Fort Kent's Community High School Winter Carnival Food Drive, Gardner Area High School Thanksgiving Food Drive, uh, Halldale Key Club. I don't know what their project was, um, Midcoast Community Alliance and Oak Hill High School Legislative Assembly, someone from the Fayette School District. And School Nutrition Program in RSU three and then the Have a Heart Hunger for, um, Food Drive for MSAD seventy-five. So, this was a nice surprise, I haven't even had a chance to share it with the faculty yet, um, and then to be able to, then in turn, share it with students. But just another sort of symbol that the, the kindness you take, uh, to be able to show to others has a way of making an impact and making a difference. And this was nice to get this unexpected letter to be able to share with our students and our, our faculty. You have that letter in your packet. Uh, I also want to let you know that, um, I know that you're aware of our first round of COVID relief funds that were granted to schools. And we've talked about that already, uh, just in the financial report when I said I needed to move some funds back to that grant. The state has just made aware, or made available a second round of COVID relief funds which were due for application last week. Um, and that I've applied for and we were notified that the projects were approved. This is great news, except for the challenge with the CRF funds are that, um, funding can only be spent on needs that are come from a direct result of COVID. It can't be anything that you've budgeted for, um, in your budget, so it's nothing that you were already anticipating. And everything has to be completed and invoiced and paid and, uh, logged for reimbursement by December thirtieth. So that actually doesn't allow much time to be able to get projects done and get vendors and purchase materials, especially with the supply chain as it is right now with, um, being able to get anything. And so, that becomes a, a challenge. The other challenge is that in the second half of the year, schools are all going to have financial needs that we have no way to be able to cover. All the things that we were able to cover through the first round of CRF funds that had to be ended by December thirtieth, you know, it would be completely full of those funds are gonna be available from Ju- January one to the end of the year and they're not currently. That being said, uh, we have one large project that Siemens has committed to, to upgrading the ventilation system and the office, guidance office in the hallway, work that really should be done anyway and will make, um, those workspaces, um, able to manage more than just a couple of people. And sort of upgrade that, um, and then just to have air circulation in the hallway, so that will be able to get done. And then I've also budgeted for, um, storage solutions, some outdoor storage, some indoor storage, things to be able to store our PPE, to be able to take care of all the items we had to remove from classrooms. And so, we'll have, um, some, some sheds and some cabinets, things that we've been trying to solve anyway in terms of storage. And then also some outdoor classroom supplies and materials. I also budgeted for upgrading the sinks in the classroom to have touchless faucets, but trying to get a plumber in, um, before December thirtieth to get all of that work done or remain to be seen. But that's, those are some of the priorities that hopefully we'll be able to tackle with these funds. And if you have the opportunity to, to speak to anyone with legislative, um, impact, you know, please ask them to consider or continue to push for having these funds available after January first. Because there's no need to rush to spend funds that really we will need in the second half of the year. So if there's anyone you know to reach out to, that would be a, a great way to be able to, um, advocate for the support of schools. Those two items are, are my district updates for, for the moment.
All great news, uh, any board questions, comments or feedback?
Um, I just, I was just thinking, I know we were working on replacing some like, I think they call ventilators in the classrooms, is that something, even though we hadn't budgeted, budgeted for it, can we use that money?
Um, we probably, except for the supply chain, it won't, I, I know the turnaround is twelve to fourteen weeks once we order them. It's typically I have to wait till town meeting and then I say we have the funds and then we don't get them until October or November. But the other pieces that we invested time and resources to making sure all of our ventilators were balanced appropriately and measured so that I knew the airflow. And actually, this one of our old ventilators really are among the best in terms of bringing in outside air, so I don't wanna disrupt that at this time. Um, I don't think we could have pulled it off with supply chain anyway.
Yeah, that is a women in amount of time.
Right, it's very quick.
Could we, is that something that we could like draft a letter as a board to send to our local representatives just, um, to sort of be a united front and have some backing maybe?
Yeah, if the board is, um, in support of that, I can have a letter drafted for you to review by Friday.
Um, I would be in support of just sending, uh, a letter as a board, um, just to express our opinion and the challenges that are being faced. Because I'm sure we're not the only ones that are facing them and maybe if we speak out, then it, um, becomes a bigger conversation.
Was that a motion?
I make a motion that we draft a letter in regards to the coronavirus relief fund, uh, time constraints and send to our local legislature, legislators.
I second it, but ju- is it the federal cares money?
It is federal.
Should it be to, not our local legislators, but our senators, representative?
Okay, can I, can I amend the motion to the appropriate political representatives? Second?
Okay, the motion has been revised, the second still remain.
I second.
Yeah, we have a second, uh, from Joanne, uh, to draft a letter to the appropriate elected official.
Correct.
Any discussion on the motion? I will call the roll, Mary?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, that is unanimous. Great idea. Any other questions on the district updates?
Uh, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to comment and say thank you Emily for thinking of creative solutions, um, such as, I think the storage is a great idea because that's something that we've come up against for a long time. And so, to be thinking of ways that we can use these funds to be impactful, not only for COVID related, but also long term. I just, I really appreciate your, your thoughtfulness and your efforts as always.
Agreed. Alright, move on to item nine, nine point one, uh, SFSP School Nutrition Waiver.
Excellent, um, last month I reported that we had received a federal waiver, the state had received a federal waiver, uh, for school nutrition, allowing us to move from the National School Lunch Program to continue the school, uh, the summer food service program through December. And what that allows is we're all students to receive breakfast and lunch free of charge. There still are the local costs to the district that we would incur, uh, like we would otherwise, but actually, so but there's no cost to the families. And the reimbursement for a school, um, the summer food service program is actually slightly higher than the National School Lunch Program. So we then received notice that we are able to have that waiver through the end of the school year. And so, um, through June, we'll be able to continue with being able to offer free breakfast and lunch to all of our families. I wanted you to just be aware of that, there's, there's no action. In-person district updates, I don't have anything necessarily specific, um, with this agenda item, but I wanted to just give you a little bit of information about how things were going and to give you the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have. But just briefly, it's amazing actually to me that we're already in the seventh week of school. It's, time has gone really fast, the weeks go very quickly, the days are very busy and it's all gone remarkably well. Yeah, it's, it's gone very well. Students continue to show us how resilient they are, they've done an incredible job following all the rules and procedures and are just generally happy to be at school. And they tell us that often, you know, they're, um, they're pleased to be able to be around their peers and they're pleased to be able to interact with their teachers. We've really begun to settle into our routines and that's given us now the opportunity to start to add in some of the things that we weren't traditionally would do. Like we've completed all of our fire drills, for example, um, we've done our NWEA testing. And actually, we're going to try spirit week next week and really embrace the, the madness of a whole week of Halloween. So, things that, um, you know, a few weeks ago even, I might not have thought that we're, we're really ready for. We are starting to pull back in the, the pieces of, um, being at school that we had always done before while maintaining all of our distancing protocols and procedures. Uh, I do wanna say that our nursing staff has been amazing, what a difference having a full-time nurse. And then while we hadn't planned for having two part-time nurses, the way it actually has worked has, um, exceeded my expectations and hopes. Because they've been able to, uh, make it so that if one of them has to be out, the other is available to cover. And so, there's never that concern of not having a nurse here and having the two of them be able to have a partner and to be able to share, um, with each other their ideas and to, um, support one another has really been a great process. And so, I'm, I'm grateful that we used some of our CRF funds from the first round to be able to, uh, increase our current nurse to a couple of days while, um, hiring our, our newest nurse for four days. So we end up with six days of nursing, it's been, it's been fantastic. Very grateful to them. Um, I also just can't say enough about our, our teaching staff, our school, um, nutrition staff. Everyone is taking on so much more to try to do this very well. Um, we've been making sure that we're limiting our substitute teachers, we actually have only had a substitute in the building for one day by covering one another when someone needs to be out. And that really is to be able to maintain our cohorts and to, to make sure that we are limiting our exposure to each other, um, as a way to be able to keep our building, um, in each other safe. The, um, lengths that people have gone through to step in and help one another has, you know, I shouldn't be surprised, but yet again, I am. This, this staff just shows continuously that they're here for one another and for the kids and certainly are living that mantra of, of we are crew. It's been, it's been tremendous to, to see it in action. I do want to just sort of acknowledge that there are some challenges. As you are aware, as parents and teachers, we have a required state flow chart, uh, for managing health, um, and, you know, cold and flu symptoms and COVID symptoms. And anytime a student is displaying any of those common symptoms of COVID, they need to have a doctor's office follow-up. And then testing is required for students to be able to return to school. And that has been a hard adjustment, um, especially in those first few weeks because it was new for all of us. The flow chart was new, uh, for the school and for families and then actually even for doctor's offices too. But as we have, um, sort of gone through the process and everyone has sort of fallen into that routine a little bit more, we've been able to, it's, it's leveled off some. In terms of feeling like we are understanding the, uh, the needs that the flow chart says and the requirements for coming back to school. When students are out because they have had symptoms and they're waiting on COVID tests, we've been able to have students join an instruction remotely while they wait to come back. Our general philosophy has been if students are out because they're sick, then they should be sick. But if they're going to be, if they're feeling well and are waiting to come back, then we offer that remote instruction for them. And really, the last couple of weeks have felt much more smooth, um, in the, for the waiting game of waiting for testing. It has been a bit of a challenge, especially initially when we had students out, we were waiting for testing and there was long delay to get results. And that felt like a weakness in the system of being able to open up school safely, is that waiting game for waiting for results? But again, over the last few weeks, the test results have come more quickly, um, kids have generally only had to be out for twenty-four to forty-eight hours waiting. So that would be another piece that, you know, hopefully will, the state will continue to move for having faster turnaround time for testing. But again, we are sort of settling into a routine there. Another challenge has, has been that it's been really hard to find professional time with the staff. Uh, they're missing their colleagues and other than our Wednesday morning late starts, there's not any other time in the week to, to meet or collaborate or even have committee meetings. And that really is because of the need to cohort and stay in small groups. And everyone now has duties every day and I can't easily pull teachers to be able to cover one another to be able to tend to other professional development meetings, um, because we wanna keep to our cohort requirements. So that has been a challenge and again, comes back to the teachers and staff really going above and beyond to, to make this all happen. You know, they're, they're working really hard at all parts of their day. The other challenge, of course, for, um, the staff is that teachers are also parents. And balancing the needs of our own children in all of their variety of school programming and having many of our own kids not in school for much of the week, certainly has been, um, a challenge. And something that, again, when I wanna sing the praises of how much my staff is putting, um, our students first, I have to also acknowledge that being a parent is a, a hard time right now and that our teachers have that added stress as well. However, things really are continuing to go very well and we know that we can't control what happens outside of school, uh, but we're feeling like we have things well in place at the moment to be able to meet guidelines and keep people safe while they're in school. And so, that really is, you know, the piece we have to keep focusing on is that we can't necessarily, um, say that we won't have a, um, a student or a staff member who has a positive COVID diagnosis. But we wanna be sure that what we're doing here means that we're not, um, encouraging any spread to happen if that does happen. Uh, as you look at the schools around the state as they've had, um, as they've had positive cases, they're all, they're all supposed to be following the standard operating procedures, um, that have been issued to schools about how you respond. And typically, the CDC is going to tell us what those initial requirements are if there is a case in the school. So I know that in some of our meetings in August and September, we had internal questions or conversations with the board about, are there local pieces that we wanna have in place, decisions that we want to make, um, you know, when there is a case? But really now with those standing operating, standard operating procedures, we sort of have the rules of, um, what we're supposed to do. And it's been helpful to see that play out in other schools so that we can really see, you know, what that, you're really begin to think about what that would look like when, when we have a case here. But so far, you know, things have been very positive and, um, we're continuing to move forward, grateful to be at school in person five days a week. Um, I do wanna give you an opportunity to ask any specific questions you may have about in-person instruction, um, if you have any. I know that again, you're well versed in the, the daily operations of the school, being parents and, and teachers.
Any board question, feedback, concerns? Alright, I guess we're all on board with, uh, continuing doing what we're doing. Do you anticipate any significant changes or concerns we should have on the radar as we go into colder weather and maybe outside time is a little less or maybe not?
Yeah, and we're going to continue to try to be outside as much as we can. Um, one of my other projects in the CRF grant was to make sure that we had, um, fall weather clothing and cold weather clothing for our students. And so, I'm going to, uh, do an order of supplies to just make sure that everyone has what they need. Uh, and again, I had said that we had, I had put in some funds to be able to upgrade outdoor classrooms and maybe look at some more permanent shelters. I keep coming back to that for the month of January for the last two years for winter kids, we spent a month of time outside in the coldest part of, of the year. And so, we have to continue to adjust and, and. And so we have to continue to adjust and, and think about how we're going to be outside as much as we can. But we also know that the way we're set up is following all of our, um, the rules that were required to meet also. And so, you know, there has to be a little bit of a balance of what makes sense and, you know, what's going to keep kids healthy. Some of that isn't always being outside all day long, but when we can be, we will be. I don't have a good solution for all of our winter gear in terms of when kids need to get into boots and snow pants and winter coats and how to manage all of that, because right now they're maintaining all of their own things at their own workspace. I budgeted broadly for winter gear storage in, in the CRF funds, but I don't have a solution at the moment for what, exactly what that looks like.
All right, moving on to I, new business, item 10.1, six through 12 enrollment.
All right, in your board packet, I have given you the enrollment for six through 12. And we currently in grades six through 12 have 111 students. You can see now they're broken out in RSU one and in other school choice, um, places of public and private. When I looked at our enrollment, um, in our October one reporting, I was surprised actually at how, how high it was. Uh, we are within four of our predicted enrollment from last year. And so students definitely chose to come back to school and to, um, take advantage of as much in-person instruction and remote instruction as, um, they could. The last year when we budgeted for tuition, we, um, planned on just the number of students that we were anticipating that were currently enrolled, no more, no less, thinking we'd have a big exodus with homeschool and that isn't how it played out. So I'm, I'm pleased to see that. I'm pleased to see that, that families have remained local and remained engaged with our public schools and, and private schools. So we are, those are our updated enrollments with 111 students at six through 12. And I guess the other side of that is just to reiterate that we are in line with what we budgeted for, for tuition. We have four, four students. So that will help us to cover whatever the tuition increase ends up being.
Excellent. Any board quick, the comments on enrollment?
Um, wondering will you be polling families again about their next choice?
About what they're planning to do so that we can think about how it can play out here. Along with the we had, um, two of our students who were remote, we allowed to come back into in-person instruction a few weeks ago. And so we now just have three remote students at this time. The two of our younger children who are remote teacher and the parents, they really felt like it would be better for them to be right here. And, uh, while we had not, in our plan, intended to allow that to happen, we put Next is quarter one attendance. And as part of our attendance policy, I'm required to check in with you four times a year about our quarterly attendance. And this comes back to the, um, chronic absenteeism rules and also the transparency laws. So the chronic absenteeism piece, remember is that a student is chronically absent if they are out of school more than 10% of the days that school is in session for. And so for quarter one, there's only 17 school days in that time. And so if you are out more than one day, then you're considered chronically absent. And, uh, we haven't gotten specific information yet on a waiver around chronic absenteeism. But where students are required to be out of school due to any type of COVID type of symptoms, we can anticipate that our absenteeism rate is going to be higher. If you look at the report that I put in the board packet, we, with 17 school days, had five students who fall into the chronic absenteeism category. Four of those students were due to illness and waiting on testing. And then one student, um, began with, it began with an illness and then needed a required plan and continued follow-up. And so that has all been put in place and has moved forward in a positive way. But there are, in terms of quarter one reporting, five students who fall into that category of chronic absenteeism. I do suspect that this is something that we'll get further guidance on as the year progresses about how this will be maintained and considered by the federal government. Uh, but right now it is still something I need to report.
Great, thank you. Any questions on that?
Um, I do have a quick question. Um, so if a child, like the example that you mentioned earlier, if a child's waiting for test results to come back and they're participating remotely with their class, does that count as them being absent?
So we haven't been given specific guidance around how that works right now. And so what I've been doing is the students who are remote students, we, and they're participating, they, that counts for them as attending. Students who are in-person students and are then attending remotely for that period of time are currently marked absent. But I've made a note in every attendance file when they are also attending remotely so that I'm able to make adjustments when that guidance comes out. I think it's the things where you, there just hasn't been every, every scenario hasn't been anticipated in advance. So I'm just trying to document as much of it as I can so that when we get the next sort of round of waivers and considerations that we have a way to go back and make those adjustments.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Moving on to item 10.3, calendar request.
Great. Um, I have a tech review, our current calendar and I have, um, something I'd like you to consider. The week of Thanksgiving, we have two half-days, um, for, for students. So they would come, um, as scheduled, they'd become until, they'd come to school until noon, both those days. And typically we then would have student-led conferences on, on that Monday afternoon from 12:30 till seven. Students would come for the next half-day and then the second half of Tuesday would be comp time for covering for the time that teachers did conferences the day, the day before. One of my, um, concerns is that we have not had face-to-face time with parents at all this fall. You know, we, we did a little bit of our, our bit moji open house, but we didn't have a virtual open house. We don't have opportunities to interact with our parents. And we would like to really be able to utilize our student-led conferences to still have student-led conferences, but also allow time for teachers to have face, uh, have one-on-one time with parents. And so we'd like to be able to expand the amount of time that we're offering to each individual family so that, that, we can honor our student-led conference time, but that we can work on, um, whatever the parents' needs and concerns might be. To do that and knowing that these all need to be remote meetings, which is a lot to ask anybody to do, you know, in a, a span of time, to, to meet with 10 to, to 16 different families in, in a span of a day. I would like to ask to, for you to consider that that Monday and Tuesday are not student days at all, that they're just staff days. To allow for the teachers to use those two days to schedule 30-minute meetings with each family, to have their student-led conferences and to, um, then be able to do follow-ups with families, to meet whatever needs the families might have. Because the staff hasn't had a moment to really take care of anything else since the start of the year. And even just asking them to go from 12 to seven, um, doesn't even allow for enough time to get their conferences done. I think if we're able to give them two days to schedule meaningful meetings with kids and parents remotely, that it honors them as professionals. It also takes some of the pressure off, um, the timeframe so that they can really focus on what the needs of parents are. We have a waiver in place until the end of this school year where student days don't have to be made up. When we shifted our P, our, um, our calendar till start August 8th, we moved all of our PD days from October in January down to the beginning of the year also. And so all of those times have been removed. Knowing that we don't have to make the days up and the days were already disruptive for the families because it's two half-days. I'm hoping that if I can communicate that change to parents now with a month still to go, that they already were having to make plans for those two days anyway, and it'll actually feel like maybe a good change of pace for everybody for that week and still allow us to have meaningful time with the families remotely for conferences. So it's an odd request because I again, something that I have never considered requesting before, taking out two half-days. But it just feels like, given the nature of where we are right now and where there hasn't been any other time to connect with parents, I see that as a potential opportunity with, that's least disruptive. And so I'd love for you to weigh in on how you feel about that and if that's something that you would consider.
Any board comments or questions?
I think, I think that's a really good solution Emily, because I was just looking at our school calendar, wondering the same thing, you know? How are we going to handle the parent-teacher conferences? And, um, I think that, I think that is a really, you know, make, it makes a lot of sense. And I think you're going to need more time to accommodate parents' schedules. If you, are you thinking like a Zoom format?
Right, we would use Google meets just like this and I would the teachers would give me the timeframes that they would be planning to have conferences and I would have families sign up, um, with those timeframes. And then if something didn't quite work out, we would make adjustments there. But I'd like to be able to allot for a half hour of time for each family, uh, just because there hasn't been another chance to really connect. That's something I know we're all missing.
Yeah, I think that makes very good sense.
I feel like the students at West Bath are already kind of ahead of the game, whereas other districts are not doing full-time in-person learning and haven't been since the beginning of the year and the older students also. So where they've already been able to be in-person five days a week from the beginning of the year, I think that they, they already are at an advantage of school days. So it doesn't seem like a problem to have them not in-person for those half-days. And I think you're right, families will be fine with having the, the days as no, no school instead of half-days. So I agree with it. I think it's good. I think it's good for the teachers and the families.
Uh, I, I, I agree. Uh, you know, we didn't have conferences at the end of last year, obviously. Uh, I think, you know, as a parent, there's, there's concern that, you know, did my kid fall behind, uh, last year? Are they not where they should be this year? Uh, I think ha- having a little more opportunity to discuss some of those concerns with teachers, uh, would be a positive, uh, for parents. Certainly from my perspective. Uh, so I will go ahead and make a motion, uh, that we revise the school calendar to make, uh, the Tuesday and, um, sorry, the Monday and Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving, days off for students so that we can do student-led conferences.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Mary?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. It is unanimous.
Uh, I appreciate that. I, I know it's a very strange request, but it feels very, um, teacher-friendly and parent-friendly. Given the abnormal circumstances that we're in right now. And I, I know as a parent myself, when the schools make very sudden changes in the schedule, it's extremely challenging. So I'm hoping with, again, that with a month's notice and that there are already two disruptive days, that it's something that families will be okay with. My, my hunch is they will be, but, um, especially where it allows for more face-to-face time with the teachers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Certainly thank the staff. We certainly appreciate everything that they've done up to this point and will continue to do, uh, no doubt. Brings us to item 11, public comment. We'll pause briefly and, and check and see if any public comments have come in.
There are no new public comments.
That brings us to item 12. The next meeting of the school board is scheduled for November 18th at 4:30 and it will be a remote meeting. And again, that's also in keeping with our, our desire to keep our cohorts and, and keep folks safe moving forward. At this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Go ahead, Mary. Make it your last one.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Nothing forever. Uh, we have a motion made by Mary, seconded by Ashley. Uh, I'm going ahead and call the roll. Ashley?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Keith votes yes as well. How about Mary?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. And thanks again, Mary. Appreciate it.
Bye, Mary. Thank you. Take care.